All right, in seven o'clock, I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Our first item of business, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just one.
For personal reasons, Selectman Baker will not be joining us this evening. Our next item of business is the approval of the December seventh, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. They are included. I think the corrections have been made. Any discussion?
Vote to approve the December seventh, twenty twenty-three Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Motion has been made in seconded discussion.
On page five, on the budget letter, the vulgar days and the liaison assignments warrant batch. Warranting that for the minutes. I think I might even work on to have it put on the website. That's right.
The liaison.
The liaison and the calendar.
The calendar or the letter?
Budget calendar.
We'll make both of those to the corrections. Any other corrections?
I have a question. So the, after paragraph ten, executive session, we're waiting for executive session to discuss the, including the Catholic Cemetery's tax appeal settlement. But after that, I don't see any vote. Thirty minutes on the, the vote on that. Maybe I'm missing something.
I hope we can talk about that.
Oh, was that the next meeting?
It was.
Yes.
All right.
Seeing nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Hello? January fourth, regular meeting minutes.
We can move on to the January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. On the recent. With the, with the changes that we discussed last meeting. I thought we put it down into the January.
There a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. Any discussion for corrections?
But so I'm going to have page six here. This would be the issue that is raised about the Catholic Cemetery meetings. I noticed that the, the minute from the last meeting reflected discussion of the changes that we made to this. But I don't see them in this, um, in this meeting, these minutes. What's changing on the first, so like paragraph six, I mean, um, the motion to include the Catholic Cemetery's tax appeal still says discussion not. So in order to see the discussion from this minute, from this meeting, you'd have to go over the next meeting minutes to see the discussion, am I right? Or am I missing something? But I just don't see the.
Oh, yeah, honestly, this was a month ago. I don't recall if there was discussion on January fourth, or if there was discussion on December seventh. Does anybody recall that? I remember the discussion. I don't remember the date that it happened.
So I think it's corrected in the last.
Corrected in the last.
Corrected in the last meeting minutes. There was a nice, like the discussion in the last meeting minutes about all the corrections. But, oh, you see under section four, forty minutes there? So, oh no, that's a different. We're here at some page.
Are you on the next set now, January?
I think what you're looking for is on this, the following one, when you make corrections on this, on these, it goes here, and I think the way we left it, it got brought up on the eighteenth, and if you look at it, it said on page three of the January eighteenth. It states that, so when you go off, had another comment with the vote on the Catholic Cemeteries, included that to item eleven, page six and seven, executive session, the motion to approve of cemetery that goes on and states what it said.
Yeah, I've said before, Marie, I think that the the last meeting minutes capture the discussion about the modification to the minutes, so that's all great, however, it didn't get into the actual meeting minutes from from the January fourth meeting. And I think we need to, before we approve the actual meeting minutes, the corrections to the meeting minutes need to be incorporated. So we were still one step removed from having accurate January fourth meeting minutes, but we do think that the, that our reporter did a very nice job at the last meeting reporting the discussion for the last meeting.
So, on here, because the January fourth minutes were tables. On here, it includes two, you read it, right? January fourth Board of Selectmen regular meeting, multiple men, the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes, January fourth, and correct to some two, three, and five, and that's where she puts all your comments.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I hear what you're saying, Marie, but that's, I don't think that's properly what men's meeting minutes.
That's the way it's always been done. For thirty years that I've been on board with different, that's the way it always is, and if you look at any language in other towns, it says minutes aren't approved until the subsequent following meetings.
So you're saying for thirty years, we haven't yet, minute meetings need to be amended, we don't actually amend the minute meetings? We have, we.
They amended the following month.
And it put it to the following month's minutes?
Yes, as already amended.
And the actual minutes never get amended?
No.
I think that's what it works, but I'll just go with a lot of that, that's all. I think if someone wants to pull up the January fourth minutes and see what happened, they should be able to read the January fourth minutes and see what happened. They shouldn't have to go through the January eighteen minutes to read what happened, I mean, January fourth minutes, because that's, who's going to, and why should they have to do that? Why can't they go to the actual meeting minutes and see what happened? So if we're going to, if we're going to do what you've done for thirty years, I just don't agree with that. The minute should be accurate. I don't want to make a big deal out of it. She did a nice job in the, the court secretary did a very nice job on January eighteenth. They just didn't make it into the January fourth minutes. That's all.
So, would you please read the motion?
Me?
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was so focused on the, all right, so. I've never done that before.
There's, there's a motion and a second for discussion on the table. I just want to.
For the eighteenth, or are we doing for the?
Right now.
Of course. Okay. Motion to already correct it? Motion to already correctly January fourth, twenty twenty-four Board of Selectmen regular meeting.
May, may.
As amended.
Okay, any further discussion?
The January fourth minutes where we discussed last meeting with where the address, Paul Anderson's comment is incorrect. And it was running the law. It had been reported to me annually to amend it corruption.
Try to find if there is something in here from an agent that can be cut into and added to the fourth to satisfy case concern. But there really isn't.
Well, I think certainly got to kind of look at it and see how why we do that. And I think we got to start with when we put the minutes online, once they're completed, on the, it is disclaimer on that these minutes are not approved until the subsequent following meeting that we have. Because people are taking us being posted up there as being at face value.
Okay, on page four.
One of the January fourth ones?
And one of January eighteen.
I think, good, January eighteen captured the discussion.
I, I understand, but what I'm trying to do is take something from January eighteenth that reflects your sentiments to the service of the January fourth without recreating the religion. Because that, it's now, we'll now spend ten minutes on this.
I, I, listen, I'm just raising the fact that the, that the corrections including Paul Anderson's comment corrections, et cetera, are not in the January fourth meeting minutes. You can cut paste it, I don't care. There's enough of the discussion involved. Or the, or the better thing would be just to postpone the January fourth, my own approval, and I, I'll write out my, I'll do what I did for the other, so we corrected it, and I'm just sending it to our, to the reporter. And right now, it still says like discussion not, it doesn't reflect any discussion. And I just.
So you want me to retract the motion that I made?
I'm not asking you to do anything, I'm just saying, I don't think that's the proper process. I think that the minute should reflect what happened at the meeting. Not the following meeting minutes should reflect what happened at a previous meeting. So with correct meeting minutes, you have to correct the meeting minutes from that meeting. So like that section should say, you know, there was discussion. Selectman Yageloff proposed the, the approval of the tax lien because he thought that all taxpayers should be treated equally, or I, I don't, quite frankly, I don't remember my specific comment. I'll be happy to go back to the YouTube video and, and write two sentences if you want to correct it. And I think Paul Anderson's isn't correct either, I think.
If we, if we break the established precedent, then we have to do it to every minute that you have. Do you want to go to do that? It, it would practically be impossible for me to go back and do that, and you cannot say these minutes are not official until approved at that subsequent meeting.
So for example, Paul Anderson's comments on public participation on January fourth, say, right now, in the, in the minute you're going to approve, Paul Anderson has, at his address, has stated positive response to the town handling of the FOIA. He reiterated his town personnel and active professional integrity, and I brought in the actual statement that he made, and I think the FOIA, they have to do with his comments about.
About assessments.
And it says, January fourth has been posted, and it says these minutes are not official. So they were not approved, so that is not a face value. So the next meeting, they were approved correctly and amended, and then approved with all these suggestions. That's why it's all states who says what. And if I may say so, I, in the discussion part, the discussion usually involves more than one person. You objected, and I made sure that you opposed. And that's it, it's, you, you provided monologue, not the discussions.
If, if the selection, I'm sorry, let me just tell you, if the selection speaks and it gives a, gives a rationale for why they vote, that's discussion. Discussion doesn't require two people to be voted in the minutes, in my opinion. So if I, if I make the comment, or, or First Selectman Bowles makes the comment, no one else makes a comment, by your methodology, it gets recorded as no discussion. I don't, I don't know how we do that.
And from now on, I will, I'm making sure that everything you say, I'm putting it in my lap.
Well, no, we're not, we're, we're not going to do a transcript on it. That's not what the answer is supposed to be. So here's what I would propose we do. On, on the top of the January fourth meeting minutes indicates that the minutes are correctly in the December, in the January eighteen meeting minutes. I would offer that, well, if, if that's all right, I'd like a friendly amendment to the motion, vote unless meanwhile, this other side.
Good solution.
Two chats on there also, not sure.
Oh, I didn't see that, thank you. So, Sarah, are you amenable to that as a, as an amendment?
Yes.
All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor of the January fourth meeting minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? January eighteenth.
Vote to approve the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes.
Second is the discussion.
Discussion, go ahead.
Then page two. On number four, is incorrect. The paragraph that says Deputy First Selectman, you read it through the study that he must also reflect the assignment offered to Selectman Yageloff to be on the water, his control authority. And then in the motion, he said, it reflects comments of Yageloff on page five, I am D, with excluding of his assignment waters. He's controlling, he never, he never accepted that offer to take that committee, so that's inaccurate. It was offered because he wasn't happy.
Well, so it should say offered, but it's not.
Right, it was offered, but it's not. And I don't, again, I don't remember the exact verbiage that I used, nor do I have the time to go back and look at it on the screen, so do whatever you want to do, but he objected that some of that was off.
Okay.
And that's the only thing I saw.
Hey, any other corrections? All in favor of the minutes, minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public participation, this is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. I'll first ask if there's anybody here in the room who would like to do so. If you would, state your name and your address, and state your business. And I'll offer the same opportunity to anybody who is with us online. Is there anybody here who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Paul Anderson, United Main Street, Broadway, just saying, you know, a piece of information. The North Central Health District will be having a vice hearing on February thirteenth. One of the few times the public can do anything with the North Central Health District, that would be, other than being told what to do. I expect to attend that meeting. I have questions on their budget and their operation, so I figured that's a good thing, and I think everybody should know that that's coming up. I know that everybody doesn't get to J I and C all the legal businesses. But these things happen. And if you don't attend, then you give up your opportunity to say anything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public comment? Is there anyone online who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen?
Hi, Jason, Norine Farmer, two forty-seven South Water Street. I see on the agenda that you're discussing the arts and culture to convert them into a full-time commission rather than a committee. I, I think that's a phenomenal idea. They have done so much good work in town. They work extremely hard, and they certainly deserve to be a full-fledged commission and everything that comes with that versus a committee. Thanks.
Thank you for those words of support. Is there any other public comment? If so, please state your name and your address.
Yeah, look at you, sweetie.
Okay, we'll have another opportunity later in the meeting. Resignation, no communications, resignations, we do have one.
Vote to accept the resignation with regret of Claire Backstodner from the elderly commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this next one is actually a clarification on an appointment that was made at our last meeting. Kathy Pippen was appointed as a regular member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency. That should have been as an alternate member. So I'd ask for a motion to correct the appointment, please.
Does the motion have to include that it's a correction?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to correct our previous appointment to reappointing Kathleen Pippen as an alternate member of the Inland Wetland and Water Course Agency for a term expiring February sixth, twenty twenty-eight.
Discussion, second. I need discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. We have two new appointments. They're at the request of Prague for regional representation or for municipal representation on the Regional Planning Agency. Planning and zoning commission has requested that we appoint Jim Thurs and Mike Kowalski, or Jim Thurs as a representative, and Mike Kowalski is an alternate representative to the Capital Regional Council of Governments Regional Planning. I think they both have plenty of experience in the field, that the integration of Prague serves the town well, and I would support the recommendation. That motion, please.
I'll make a motion that reads appoint Jimmy Thurs to the Eastern Regional Planning Commission as representative for terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And Mike Kowalski as an alternate term expire also on December thirty-first.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Okay, handed out at your seats when you came in, should have been attached in the, in the packet, but we missed the email. There is an updated memorandum of agreement between, with the Greater New Haven Transit District that simply updates a since-expired memorandum of agreement for the acquisition of buses through the fifty-three to ten grant program. This doesn't change or affect or alter any of the buses that, that we are in the process of procuring. It just updates the agreement with the Greater New Haven Transit District, who serves as a pass-through for municipalities and for the Greater Hartford Transit District as we procure those buses. It's an updating of the stadium agreement. The change to the agreement is that there was a second vendor that was added to it. It was initially limited only to Matthews Bus Alliance, and it will now also include creative bus sales. That doesn't change anything in terms of, of our pipeline for those new buses, that process is in process. Let's just make sure that there's documentation in place so that we can utilize the regional procurement. So I need, because it's a memorandum of understanding, I need authorization from Board of Selectmen to science.
Move to accept the memorandum of understanding with, between the Town of Eastwinder and the Greater New Haven Transit District and authorize the signature of the First Selectmen.
Is there a second? Discussion.
Can I ask a question about this?
Sure.
So if, if the New Haven, Greater New Haven Transit District is purchasing buses, and we have nothing to do with the purchase of the buses or I don't think, no, any aspect of this, why do they need us to sign a, to sign a memorandum, memorandum of understanding?
Because of where the funding is coming from for the, for us to get the buses. This is the last one that we had done when they had suspended the fifty-three ten grant program for the acquisition of the buses because there was no availability, and then there became availability. We were able to get them through this now lapsed MOU that was held by the Greater New Haven Transit District for the, the whole procurement of these. That MOU has since expired, expired last January, actually, January twenty-three. So all they're asking us to do is update with the new, the new language, which references, as far as I'm aware, the only change is the reference of the second bus.
You talk about like senior service buses, that is, they, not like, it's not transit buses by connecting transit that come through town. It's actually our ability to purchase like a senior service buses.
It's not as similar from that, but in our case, it's limited to the senior center buses. There are some towns that have those, those greater, like the regional transit district buses, it's the same firming stream, but in our case, it's just a three senior side.
And so this is just procurement, it doesn't have anything to do with the rouse or anything like that?
No, that's a DOT argument.
But thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Okay. We talked about this a little bit, we tabled an appointment at one point. The Arts and Culture Committee, their, their term has expired. They have done, as Norine Farmer said, they've done great work, they have some great things planned, they've expressed an interest in becoming a full-standing commission, which requires them to be established by ordinance. This is a draft of an ordinance that would do that, that takes their, their original charge. Expands on it slightly. Codifies what the membership needs to be, waves minority representation in this case, and sets them up so that they're, they have all the rights and powers of a full-standing commission. So this is still a draft. You know, we can change it if we want to. I, I've worked with Debbie Williams, who was the chair of that committee, and she's satisfied with the verbiage. So it's up to us if there's changes or concerns that we want to make.
Debbie here?
She's not. I talked to her this afternoon, and she was finally in this draft.
I have a couple of comments or questions, but I'll wait till everyone else.
I mean, I'm definitely in favor of doing this. I've been their liaison last term, and then also this term again. Given their accomplishment, accomplishments, and, you know, how they follow their charge, I think they've really shown that they should be a commission at this point. They have a lot of projects in the works, they follow through, they have great momentum and energy. I'm, I'm happy that it has the waving of the minority representation in there. And I just have one question, does, does it need to specify when they elect their chair, vice chair, and secretary to coincide with the terms, or how will they know how to follow that?
Oh, good question. So what would you say, annually?
Yes.
So I'm just gonna, after, after members at the end of section five, I'm just gonna insert the word annually and move.
Okay.
Good notes. Other comments or corrections?
Well, let's see, help first.
Go ahead.
So I think it's great. Really happy we're, we're making this into a commission. My, my, my initial concern was reading this is that it doesn't say anything about, about what happens when there's a question about whether certain art or certain something that's made, that's produced, that's going to be created or approved by this commission for a presentation somewhere or something. And then we have members of the public say, that shouldn't be there. Or we say, somebody says, I want to include that, and then somebody says, no, we can't include it. And I'm talking about discriminatory stuff, I'm talking about people's subjective points of view about what's art and what's not art, talking about things that somebody says, you know, I don't want to have this or that, or somebody wants this or that, and then somebody says you can't have it. So can we have in here a process that is, you know, visible, right? If somebody, if there's a, if there's controversy or dispute over whether or not certain art is going to be allowed in in an activity that's sponsored by the town through this committee, because I think that those sorts of decisions should be publicly available for every, the community to see. If there's going to be, and I'm not saying they would ever censor anything, but if they decide, we're not going to allow art that depicts this because it may be controversial, but the artist wants to put it in to the show because they think they have a right to do it, and then we have a subjective decision made by folks without like a process, so.
Can I, I just, they are, they kind of have a process, they, they have an open mic night coming up where they've said, you know, appropriate language, appropriate for children, like they are thinking of those things, and they're reviewing things before it comes out. I mean, I, I think that that's kind of micromanaging them and, and taking away a lot of the good things that they're doing by wanting to have a say from, are you looking for us to have a say in?
No, 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 I'm, I'm, when they're doing it, and they're, and you're having to say, I, I mean, and, and you're handling it, I just think that there should be a process in place, it shouldn't be. And I'm not accusing anybody of anything wrong, I think you're misunderstanding me. I, I think they're old, they're doing a great job. Let me give you an example, that's not quite related to this. Towns have issues about flags. Somebody wants to put up a flag in their, in their community on a flag pole, and the neighborhood, the community says, you can't do it, and then they have a dispute. Or someone wants to put up a, a flag for, for fallen veterans, for, right, for, and then they say, you can't put up anything political. And then someone wants to put up something, you know, don't tread on me, and then other people say that's, you can't do that, that's highly political. And so communities often get into the public and a lot of communities stay out of it. They don't want any part of that. They say, we're not getting into it, therefore, nothing is allowed. This happened with Christmas trees, and this happened with menorahs, our town property. And so now we're actually getting into a commission, which is great. This is an Arts and Culture Commission that is going to be establishing creating, stimulating a general interest amongst citizens and community, and it should be within the ordinance a process of dispute, that's all it is. Because that's what an ordinance is, and an ordinance usually has a, a process for dealing with disputes. I'm just trying to get ahead of it, so that if there's issues, then they, they have their own process, that's all. If Debbie was here, if someone was here, then I would ask them specifically, you know, how are you doing it, and how are you making it work, and can And can we codify it so that however you're doing it is going to be part of the requirement under the ordinance? Cause they may not be the same people down the road and who knows who's gonna be on there. And they may decide we're not gonna allow gay people to submit art about gay people. Or they're gonna say, well, we're not gonna allow people to submit artwork that has to do with, oh, it's too naked. Or it's not naked enough or whatever. And you're not allowed to put it in the show because somebody's gonna find you a fencer. But the artist says, this is artwork and I want to put it in here. So we're we're, this is this is for the community. This is the, this is the arts and culture commission for the community. So we need to establish community standards that are gonna make sure that the community is doing what it should be doing. That's all.
Can you speak to what their process is?
It's just really discussing amongst themselves what's appropriate, you know, as far as no foul language. There there hasn't been any discriminatory practices that have come up at all. There's like. That's never happened and I don't foresee it happening because they're doing collaboration with the school system. And working with the superintendent and the board of ed to do like graduation projects for the kids in the parking lot. And things on the fences and it's. I mean, it's to a specific cause and topic at all times. I mean, a birdhouse contest and. An open mic night and working on plays and murals and I. Nothing has been inappropriate or, and I don't foresee anything discriminatory ever occurring with that group or in general. I'm just.
Sarah, you're thinking you're you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. I'm not saying that the group would be discriminatory. I'm not saying that at all. I'm not saying that would really be right. I'm saying.
But everything that you brought up was about just about gays and things of that nature that I think is not really appropriate. That that's never really happened and never going to happen. This is not even stuff that they're addressing and. And working with it's this school system and the veterans commission and and specific topics.
What if, what if somebody wants to put in the veterans artwork that's gonna be displayed? They want to put a picture of that shows some kind of cap combat and maybe something pretty serious. And then somebody says on the commission, you know, they've created it, they painted it. Someone says on the commission, this is not allowed. Because of, because it's too graphic. And the artist says, I want it because this is my depiction of how I feel about veterans in my life, in my life or how I feel about veterans. What and and I I expect that we're gonna have, we're gonna have art displays here in this building. Will there be art displays in places around town that people that community members are gonna be freely able to submit their own pieces of art? That can be displayed to represent community interest. And so so I think you're, if you're thinking that I'm saying that they're discriminatory or they're gonna discriminate, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that there that there is a high, I think a pretty high potential for for. Issues to come up where an artist says, I'd like this to be submitted. And somebody says subjectively, I don't want it to be shown. And there should be a process in an ordinance that addresses that. I mean, I've been an artist for many, many years and I've seen that that this comes up quite a bit where somebody wants to do something, which is a little bit. Some other people say subjectively, we don't want to see it. I'm just trying to get ahead of it. I want to, I think that strengthens the commission. To have a process that 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 says this is how we'll address issues in the future. I think that strengthens it, makes it stronger. That's all.
Well, generally speaking. They're gonna, you know, to the points you're reasoning that we would have it in control of, it would be on town owned properties. And on town owned properties, we do have control over what is and is not displayed. For example. That piece right there is of a local artist. There was no. You know, eleven thousand person survey that went up to determine whether or not that was appropriate. It just appears. You know, it just was put up. And I don't see that there's anybody who would have objection to that. I also would imagine that we would have the opportunity within properties that are within our control. To establish, at least at this level, what is and is not. Appropriate for, I mean, we're not gonna have naked pictures painted on the back of the bill. We're just not gonna do that. That would be something that this board would be able to.
So let me give you an example or an example. So let's say there's an art show in the building here and the arts and public community sponsors it. And they selected all the entries at all the placements, okay? And someone here on the board says, that doesn't belong in here, okay? This is our building, we control it. We don't want that in here. Or the person, not you, but somebody in the future says.
Actually, my charter is.
Alright, and said, we don't want that in here. Now you have, who's in charge? The Arts and Culture Commission or the who's who's not censoring, but who's deciding that this artwork doesn't go into this room? The commission or, and I think that they will be sponsoring things out in the community. They're gonna say, let's do this school, let's go to those places. So I was, I'm not gonna make a big deal of it. I'll I'll go back to to. Let's turn it the, I'm sorry, Debbie, I'll go I'll go back to her and I have a conversation with her offline. I'm not approving anything here tonight. I'll just try to to explain myself to her, see and see what she thinks about it. And maybe she can bring them back to her mission and maybe they can say, we don't want any part of that. Thanks Keith, but but no thanks, we don't need it. Or maybe they'll say, hey, that's a good idea. We're gonna, you know, that'd be useful, right? Instead of us talking about it, maybe we should ask them, it'd be useful to have a process in the ordinance that they can. They can, you know, know that that's their process and they're gonna manage manage any issues that way.
I just have one one other thing Jason on the ordinance yet. I don't have a problem with what's in hand. They have a problem with something that I saw online. That said that that some point they need be putting up a vote landing page. And I believe the vote landing page came up several years ago where that's not proper for us to do. So I would like. The parameters that they're able to do and not able to do for fundraising. If they're collecting money for entry fee to offset cost. Got to make sure that it goes through the right account through the treasurer's office and that's not spelt out in here anywhere, anywhere. But I agree with what they have done thus far in collaboration with the people who are doing it with. They've done an excellent job. But I don't agree that any one of us as a sweat person should take something that we're trying to establish. Go out on their own, discuss it without the rest of us being present because we're all in this together to establish it the right way. I wouldn't, I I wouldn't do that. I would ask for the individual come for a subsequent meeting so that we can all sit there together and discuss it together. So that we're all on the same page, whether we agree with the final result, at least everybody heard the same thing. We're not getting a second and third.
Okay, I got that. Anything else? So there was a motion and there was a second for discussion purposes. I think we probably should table it. Let me rework this, incorporate these comments and I'll bring something back.
Do you think Debbie could attend our next meeting?
Yeah.
Or not?
No, because it's A R H R C night. I'll work with her and get the, get her to sign out on the language. Okay, so with the maker of the second, can you rescind your motion?
I amend my motion to table making the Arts and Culture Committee a permanent commission until next meeting.
It's actually postponed.
Postponed. Yes.
So it's not the next meeting, just postponed, right?
Table it has to be taken up the same meeting, postponed it could be in the next meeting for a subsequent.
Thanks for clarifying.
You're the second or second. Discussion on the motion just to postpone. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. The calories. You're up.
So you've all had a memo from me in your packet with regard to the eight twenty first referral. For town owned property on Morris and Wapping Road at the January ninth. Twenty twenty four meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission made a negative referral in response to the November sixteenth request from the board's selectmen. Regarding the transfer of a vacant town on parcel. To Lorraine Moss, all north the adjacent lot at ten Morris Road. And but the reason for this negative referral is. Parcels that are designated as open space in the process of approving a subdivision. When transferred, actually triggers the need for re-subdivision to modify the map. And along with that, wetlands or open space. In our subdivision regulations. We require twenty percent of the subdivision unless it's smaller. And then we'll go with a B and L. So in this case, the commission felt that if. This we lose the open space and. At the designated area and. If we go back to amend the map, we would be, they would be looking to be made whole. In the area of either the in the open space. Or another parcel of equal value. You know, kind of the swap that happens. And for those reasons, they gave the negative referral.
So if we were to circle back with, is it Ms. Ross, I think? And express to her that there would be a fee in the love attached to it, that would satisfy the planning and zoning mission?
The value would have to be determined.
Is that a fair second?
That as well as in this particular pay situation, parcel was also used as a stormwater runoff. So we'd have to take a look at if there would have to be other mitigations or. Measures taken to still accommodate the stormwater runoff. You know, may have may have to have something deeded into the property for the allowance of the stormwater runoff through the property.
Right, but current easements would have to be maintained.
Okay, so i- in this particular case, and I I can take that back to the applicant and see if they're gonna open to that. And then we'll figure out how to come to terms on what that valid. But just something the commission, and I'm gonna talk to Mike as chairman. The commission really going forward should consider that the town ends up the custodian of bunches of. Unusable property.
That was a big part of our discussion and we truly wanted to set a precedence of how to handle all of these other properties going in the future. So that may also was a discussion of. It should be available to all the others to this property. It should not be just offered to one individual. So we were now to talk about trying to transfer some of these open space properties. It should be offered to all the others.
Yep, and that that makes perfect sense. I'm just hoping that there will be some consideration prospectively that. The, you know, the twenty foot swath pieces that that doesn't help the town in it.
Oh, exactly. And that's what we were trying to say is rather than a direct transfer, the B and L will help build our open space funds. And we can actually now take and create some valuable or usable open space to the town.
Okay, good. So you guys are, that's on your to do list?
Absolutely.
Alright, and and it's not ours to circle back with Lorraine?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Then I was at the conservation commission meeting. This week.
Thursday.
Right, last Thursday, yeah. And they they had a long discussion about this. And the reason they had a long discussion about it was because they said that it was to talk about a process. Where they were asked to give feedback to perhaps you were for planning zoning about being involved. In discussions about these parcels because some of these parcels, even though they might be small, can serve as wildlife quarters. They can be important in terms of, they may not be big parcels, but they can play an important role. As I just said, wildlife quarter. And they would like to be like. Have parcels flow through their commission, at least so they can scrutinize them. And then give feedback to planning zoning or the board of selectmen as to whether or not that parcel may serve a purpose. To the town for conservation purposes. And then they also said that that I thought they said perhaps that there would have to be a something, a rule or regulation that says you can swap back. Or the B and L after they've made a decision to donate it to the town. Because I don't, there's gonna be a process for that, like formal process that you, in order to, in order to buy back a property. You would have to do the B and L and pay it over to the town, just like we were talking about. And whether that will be a process or not. So anyway, they, I think it makes sense.
Very similar considerations.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense to involve the conservation commission in in screening properties. Just like when they make an open space purchase, whether or not that's a valuable purchase. And also if we're gonna release property back to a private owner, maybe they could screen it also to see maybe that could be. Problem for the for the town for conservation purposes. I ask you, it sounds like though there are exceptions to the planning and zoning. Cause they also discussed the Scantic River area. There's a, sometimes the planning and zoning commission doesn't always take money or. Land for the town. Sometimes other things happen with land, like the Scantic River thing. Is that, is that always set in stone or?
In relation to the subdivision?
Yeah, like it was a river valley or the the river, the river, the one on Scantic Road, that that subdivision.
You're talking about West River Farm?
West River Farms. That didn't go to the town, that Scantic, that all that land back there that was donated to. That was supposed to go to the town, which was open space. It didn't go to the town. It went to the, I think it went to the. It's called billing commission. And then that got transferred to the town of South Windsor. Like, it's really weird, like. Property in East Windsor, park property and open space in in East Windsor got deeded to the town of South Windsor. On Shank Road. And I just, is that like a process that was?
There's, there's a process.
Yeah.
Because that was a planned residential development. They required thirty percent.
Right.
Open space set aside. The town has the right of first refusal. If they were to transfer that property.
So just.
And it came to the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
And the town was given the right of first refusal and.
They passed.
The town didn't want it. So Windsor, who has a wildlife area back there, saw value in having it be. Under their ownership and.
I thought of, I think it's a beautiful area. Of course, it's wildlife area and it's part of the, it's the end of the Scantic River at that point. So it's it's like a, it's like a really important.
It is, it is an open space conservation. It's not developable.
Right, it's a really important area and I just was surprised that there's a process where the town would waive ownership of something so important. Given to another town, but that's another issue.
Well, it's actually not in our town. Why have we passed that?
No, it's.
The park is, the park itself is in South Windsor Road is in East Windsor.
No, most of the Scantic River area there is in is in East Windsor.
That is incorrect.
I would add. Sorry, we disagree. I'm not, I'm not raising that if you talk about that tonight. But the. I was trying to about conservation commission.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we have next steps on the eight twenty four. Next, we have the Emergency Management Performance Grant. This was something that we tabled a few meetings ago as we were waiting for updated information on trainings. If you'll turn in there, you will see. On page. Following page nine, there is a roster of those emergency management courses that have been taken by Chief Carl and by myself. With the associated cert certificates from BMO. That was the outstanding piece of information we were waiting for on this. The on page five, halfway down, there is a resolution that the board needs to pass, that then the town park needs to certify was passed. And it reads as follows. Resolved, the Board of Selectmen may enter into with and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. Any and all documents which deemed to be necessary and appropriate. And further resolved that Jason Bowser is the first selectman of the Town of East Windsor is authorized and directed. Execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the East Windsor Board of Selectmen. And to do and perform all acts and things which he or she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out in terms of such documents. And then the following is attested to by the town.
Second.
I was not making this motion. If you'd like to motion maker, that's my.
Read it.
I read it, yes.
I move to adopt the the statement resolution by First Selectman Bowser. As to the Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anything I need to add to that? No way I could add to that. Reading the resolution. All in favor? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Deputy Chief, have you started your coursework yet?
This evening, sir.
So signing up for the login is the hardest part. That was, I had more hair at the beginning of that. They're great courses. They're they're free, they're do it at your own pace, most of them. Some of them actually require in-person trainings. Chief, Chief and I went to one in August, that was a three-day thing, put on by. Instructors from Texas.
Yeah, that's so, yeah.
We've done the three hundred, we need to do the four hundred.
Four. You'll see in there. For this grant there, that the training. Has to be done for anybody paid by September forty one. So by the September of this year, Deputy Chief will have all the training here. The difficult part when we do this is we've had, you know, trained a thousand years, FEMA, I know you're going to find it hard to believe, the federal government has changed their rules multiple times. So it used to be under our security, and now when you try to get an SID number. They state plain that you already have one, but you can't get one because they have to research. Old classes at Utah, so you don't have to do it. So it's not as easy as Selectman Bowser said it can be.
The frustrating part that I found is that they hadn't updated their syllabus on their, I'm looking for courses that no longer existed and were preceded by something else with a different number. It's honestly, deciding on the cards. All right, tax refunds.
Local tax refunds totaling eight hundred seventy nine dollars and eighty five cents.
Is there a second? Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
opposed? No carry. I don't want to. All right, Selectmen's Reports. So there was a lengthy discussion earlier tonight around meeting minutes and we're working our way through that. But I wanted to share the sad news that. Peg Hoffman, after a short illness, passed away on Monday. She spent her working life in the community, in the in the community banking industry. Before coming to work for the town of East Windsor, where she worked in our Parks and Recreation Department and our Planning and Zoning, uh, Planning and Zoning Department. For many years. She also staffed many boards and commissions in town. She lived her whole life here in town and her family has deep roots here as well. Our deepest sympathies go to Peg's loved ones as we share in their grief over her passing. And I I can say that sincerely is felt in this building. Last Friday, actually you'll see right here in front of me. The town was recognized by the Connecticut Interlocal Risk Management Association, KERMA. For five years of reductions in our workers' compensation liabilities. The town of East Windsor has received a forty-two percent decrease in workers' compensation claim severity each year. Since twenty eighteen, which is an outcome that punctuates the town's commitment to risk management. KERMA has been a good partner to the town for many years and the resources that they provide in terms of training, coverage and workplace hazard mitigation recommendations they're serving us well. We appreciate the working relationship that we have with KERMA and their recognition of our progress. Over the last several weeks, Finance Director Amy O'Toole and I finished meeting with department heads and agencies of the town concerning their departmental submissions. We reviewed them all and finalized my initial recommendations, which I will present, I'm hoping to present at a joint public hearing between the Board of Selectmen and Education. On February seventh at seven P M. Following that, the Board of Selectmen will begin their review of the initial recommendations, make changes as necessary and forward a recommendation to the Board of Finance. On January twenty third, Representative Foster and I joined residents of Park Hill for a coffee hour. Where residents asked us anything that they wanted to know about, and those conversations are always fun because you sit a chair in the center of the circle and say, what do you want to talk about? And they come at you with anything. It actually is a really fun exchange. I appreciated having Representative Foster join us, particularly as the legislative session opens on Wednesday of next week. If you have any questions or concerns for her, you can reach her at her legislative email address, which I've included here. On Monday of this week, Representatives of our Police Department, Ambulance Association and Fire Departments met with state and regional officials. To discuss the need to replace our emergency radio system, now twenty years old and no longer able to procure replacement parts. We're developing a regional solution that would meet our needs, work interlocally and strengthen the state system, and we expect to have a recommendation to bring to. The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and multiple of the voters. As soon as we're in, like likely months, hopefully sooner than that. Last night, I attended the East Windsor High School Resource Block Party to learn more about what opportunities there are for students in our high school. It was wonderful to see so many teachers on hand to explain extracurricular offerings and to see other community resources represented as well. I will tell you, my four-year-old son hit every single one of those swag days, everyone. Couple of reminders about upcoming events. The Panther Plunge is coming up on February seventeenth. We are doing a time capsule for weekday, which will be a four-year time capsule. If anybody wants to submit anything for the record, that will be going in. It can be submitted to either the Senior Center or to Park and Recreation, and it'll be opened on February twenty ninth, twenty twenty eighth. The Senior Center is working with AARP to offer free electronic tax filings. You can call Senior Services to make an appointment for that. And finally. And this goes toward risk management to a significant degree. The town will be offering an adult pediatric first, an adult and pediatric first aid CPR and AED certification class. On Thursday, March seventh, from five to seven thirty at the Town Hall Annex. The cost is forty-five dollars per person and include the two-year certification application of the course. It's a staff facilitated training and it equips students of the course with knowledge necessary to recognize and care for a variety of first aid. Breathing and cardiac emergencies involving both adults and infants. It's what's called a blended course or a brick and click course where you need to do some of the work for it ahead of time. Followed by the actual facilitator instruction the night of. Pre-registration is required and it can be done at eastwindsorrec.com. That's my report. Marie?
First thing I have, I attended the East Windsor Housing Authority meeting that was held on January twenty fourth. The meeting was rather quick. So, things that were commented on. Value, the leased property at thirteen Reservoir was approved to extend the peace agreement with the individual that's living there. They have two trees on the property, one by the garage and one down towards the opposite end of. The housing unit where the trees are diseased and they need to come down, so they. Approved an emergency expense to have those taken down so that nobody gets hurt. Good news, after a couple of years of partner with different organizations helping them out, they finally were approved for five oh one C three. So that's been a long time in the making, so that should hold them. Going forward in some of the endeavors that they have. One of the concerns that were brought up, CHFA has required that all volunteer state housing commissioners throughout the. State of Connecticut has to receive training on their roles and responsibilities and. Their responsibilities and relationship to the director of the facilities. Our volunteers on that board currently all work daytime in meetings that are currently scheduled for that mandatory training. Would require them to lose time from work, so the Housing Authority is. Looping back around to talk to CHFA to see if there's any way they can do a non-line course. So we'll see what happens there. And then I would like to think over the other couple of things. That I I noticed. I noticed that during public participation, we ask people to state their full name and their addresses. And in reviewing. Some of the minutes, we have first name and a initial. I'm not going to remember who Tom B is, six months down the road. So I want to make sure moving forward that during public participation, whether it's online or here, that we get the full name of the individual that's speaking. So this way, if there's any questions or anything that comes down the road, we know who we're talking to. Thank you for putting on the minutes that they're not approved until subject had one. And I received an email. That was copied to several other people from John Melissa. In regards to his concerns that he had regarding the minutes on January fourth. I told him they were intended for our upcoming meeting. There was some back and forth, and finally, we read the minutes and realized that he aired in his comments. I won't discuss any personnel matters or any of that stuff with the public. That's not my place. And it's not their place to know personnel stuff. I also have a concern. Several boards and commissions recently to include the last one of the Building Committee. They did everything that they thought was right, but the voice didn't come out on the recordings. Planning and zoning has commented at a couple of their meetings, they had trouble with. The settings because somebody's changing them. I don't know if we need to secure that box over there, but it just seems like we've never had a problem, but since. Three months ago, there's. Issues with the recording machine, so I don't know if we need to have somebody come in and service it. I don't know if we need to lock it to make sure no one's touching buttons that they don't know what they're doing. But it's embarrassing when people comment that. We intentionally are doing stuff that we're not intentionally doing. So, and then my other concern is. We have a key fob that's available. I think we need to put a certain control on that.
What is the key fob available to?
People lock the doors at night for people that are using it. With that, so I just throw that out there, that's the things I have. And in your boxes today, when I came down. I received this letter. And I noticed that there was other letters and people. Boxes in the room back there, has the individual name and address on there, but in opening up the two pages. There's no signature on it. So I, because there's no signature on it, I can't confirm or deny that it came from the individual that's on there. There's things that are in here that I, none of my business, it has nothing to do with me or on the Board of Selectmen. So I'm not going to entertain it. And it would have been nice if this was the individual that it was signed and then the CCs were put on it. Because I would hate for somebody to take and try to answer so many of these questions in here without. Us and our totality and make sure that everybody's on the menu. So I have a concern that if anybody on this board decides to sign this. It may not be one percent accurate. Because I don't know what individuals do on their campaign, nor do I care. I sit on the Board of Selectmen, how they run their campaign is their business. If I have a concern with how they're running their campaign, then I certainly can file a complaint with the appropriate people. So I just throw up that out there, they appear anything. There's no signature on here, so I won't address anything that's not. Properly signed. That would open up liability as far as I'm concerned.
Sir.
Okay.
The Building Commission held a very short meeting on January twenty second. There was some discussion of a future meeting to be held with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Education to discuss the school facility study report. The contract with BRB Builders for the Community Center project is currently being reviewed by town attorneys. And the commission approved their twenty twenty four meeting dates. On January twenty fourth, I attended the Board of Education meeting. Dr. Patrick Tudren shared the superintendent's FY twenty four, twenty five proposed budget with the board. I'd like to compliment the superintendent again this year on putting out detailed information to coincide with his numbers. So that the public can understand the needs of the school system. After revenue and grants have been offset, the proposed school budget is coming in at a five point four five percent increase over last year. Dr. Tudren explained that there are some funding cliff challenges, which include loss of S R funds totaling seven hundred thousand dollars. Transportation increasing by ten percent at ninety thousand dollars. And an increase of special education by three point six percent, which totals two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And an increase on health insurance and pension contributions. The superintendent's proposal is on the town and school websites if the public wishes to see it. Some exciting news, East Windsor High School junior and girl basketball player Bailey Winter scored her one thousandth point. As the boys and girls varsity teams continue to have a great season. Students in the elementary school and middle school have been participating in the Great Kindness Challenge. And have been making Valentines for the Parks and Recreation Community Valentine Project. And high school students just finished their midterm exams. I just wanted to share that my family is very blessed that my grandmother, Sophia Muska, turned one hundred years old on Monday. I was delighted to have lunch with her at the Senior Center last Thursday to celebrate with her as she and the other January birthday babies were recognized. I'd like to thank Melissa Maltesi, the staff at the Senior Center and members of the Community Renewal Team. Who presented her with a beautiful bouquet of flowers, a lovely card and a cake. For ma- and for making her day so special. I'd also like to thank the First Selectman for the proclamation that he presented to her at her party on Sunday. It truly meant a lot to her and my family. I was also deeply saddened to hear of the passing of our recording secretary and friend Peg Hoffman. I've known Peg mostly all of my life, as she only lived a few houses down from where I grew up on Church Street. She was thoughtful, kind and had tremendous attention to detail. She always took the time to write a letter or send a thoughtful email to show that she truly cared about others' feelings and what they were going through in life. I will cherish those memories. My thoughts and prayers are with her and her family during this difficult time. That's all that I have.
I attended the Agricultural Commission meeting, they're getting ready for their. Plowing and their setup for their public plot. It's been extremely successful. They're going to be expanding this year. And they're going to try to increase the activities when they do their plowing and setup to draw people into participating. They don't have a specific date, but the plow is going to be in March. And then they're trying to figure out the. When they stake it out.
They get kind of told by weather a couple of times, which is why I was asking.
I attended the Conservation Commission meeting. I had a little discussion earlier about what they said there. I attended the Board of Education meeting, the one that Sarah was at. I I want to reiterate her comments about the very. The very detailed and professional presentation by the staff at the at the school board, very impressive. I also attended a Board of Education curriculum meeting and the staff. That was there presenting and the members of the Board of Education, they were very thorough and very considerate and I was. I don't, impress isn't the right word, there's no one cares about impress, but they're, we are really good people that are that are parts of these Board of Education teams. Also attended the Broadbrook Fire Department meeting. They had a budget presentation. It was very thorough. A lot of discussion and we have it in our budget book here tonight, but they've done a lot of work, serious work. Getting ready for their budget for this year. I want to comment on the video issue. So what I've noticed is maybe we can improve. It used to be that the videos that went out on YouTube would be. The room from the back and you would see participants in the room when they spoke and you would see the us, the selectmen. But what's happening is for a while now, because apparently, I guess we're posting the Zoom video. What if everyone in the room can see, what this is going to get posted at as. On YouTube is the little teeny box up there, which is this room, is what you can see. And you can't see any, any, you can't make any detail out about who's saying what in the room. Particularly speakers, not that people need to see us speaking, but you can't discern who's saying what, all you hear is the audio. So. If we could either expand that box for the Zoom recording to the whole screen. Or if we can use the old system in the back. Or if we can use the old system in the back to record, cause I, I, I think I would like to see as a member of public and. Hopefully members of public would like to actually see the met, the meeting, um. Uh, in, in Sarah, I think someone mentioned the, um, the Building Commission meeting, that's the whole room, they're doing it, we actually see the whole room. For some reason their audio wa- wasn't working, but, but the Board of Selectmen isn't, isn't, isn't doing that right now. No criticism to anybody, just pointing it out because we're discussing it here tonight. And, um, Peg Hoffman, um, I wrote down my comments here, I was blessed to know her. Um, and our town was, um, very fortunate to have her living and working here. She's just a amazing woman and, um. And her loss is, is a big loss for our community. That's it.
We're gonna turn now to public participation. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. First ask, if there's anybody here in the room who would like to address the board? If so, please state your name and your address and then we'll give the, uh, anybody who's with us virtually same opportunity. Is there anybody here? Yes, sir, name and address.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Broadbrook. My understanding of a commission is all meetings are public. Which means that the comments I heard earlier about. What a commission may or may not decide. It's all public.
Yes.
And that, are they recorded or made?
They would have minutes recorded.
I know that.
They don't, they do not do that.
Okay.
Video or audio?
No, I know. Quiet, okay, but I think that, you know, there's a potential participation by anyone from the public. And the committee immediately allow. That's, that's what I got, I just know the difference between the committee and the commission. And it isn't power. I think of you all the time, it's access. Thank you.
Are there other public comments? Is there anyone online who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? If so, please unmute yourself, state your name and your address, state your business.
Hi, Jason, Noreen Farmer, two forty-seven Southwater Street. I'm actually gonna use you as a conduit to the Police Department, um. Because I did not realize they were in the room, um. I, I had a situation here on, um, the day of the snowstorm Sunday, um, where a car ended up in my yard. And, um, the police had to be called and I just want to, um. Uh, the dispatcher was absolutely wonderful, I, they had to delay getting to me because of something else. I immediately got a text message telling me that they're somewhat delayed, um, and, um, when they did arrive. Um, the officers were, were very, very good and they blocked the road to avoid anybody else getting hit and, um. Um, I'm unable to get to Police Commission meetings because I have Board of Education meetings on the same night and, um. I just wanted to convey to, um, to both the Selectmen and the Police Department that, um. Uh, my granddaughter, uh, during kindness week, which Sarah touched on. Realized that part of her kindness was to thank public servants, so she went out to the, to the officers and she gave them a candy bar. And they were so welcoming to her and they, they let her go in the car and they showed her everything and they gave her a stuffed animal from the back and, um. And they stayed during the entire time till the tow truck got here, but, um, the interaction with the officers, the dispatchers, their follow-up. Um, they followed up after the fact via text message to make sure that everything went well, um, is outstanding and, um. I just wanna, um, make sure you all understand that and that if, um, the off, uh, that if. Um, the chief and deputy chief could convey that to the Police Commission for me, I would much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, man, that's noted. Any other public comment from anybody who's with us online? Seeing none, uh, motion to go into executive session would be in order to adjust the force like.
Well, then we go into executive sessions at eight fifteen.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session. All right, it's eight thirty-one, we're out of executive session with no further business to come before the board, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, second, made by, or reseconded by Keith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned to eight thirty-one P M.